How many damn copies of this do I need?
Okay, we're going to bring this meeting forward to county commissioners to order. This time I will say, give the implication and then we'll say pledge. But we gather here tonight to take on the county's business. We ask that you put your hand wisdom over us and give us the knowledge to make the best decision for the county. We pray for this country, Lord, and we asking your name for all these things, amen.
Praise the nations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
Staff, do you have any additions?
Uh, we do, sir. Uh, we've got four additions. One is resolution number twenty-one, twenty twenty-one R forty-four, setting the time for the regular meeting for October twenty-first to eight thirty a.m. One is, uh, concerning city building inspections. Uh, one is a position description revision for the mechanic two. One is the B.A. to transfer funds for the business and individual assistance and to make sure that you, um, approve the changes that we have to the contract.
Okay, so we'll just add those to the end of the agenda. Okay, can I get a, the staff here to be, y'all have anything y'all want to add?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
The additions.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, Joe, you going?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. First item on this evening's agenda is resolution, uh,
Twenty-one R forty.
Yeah, twenty twenty-one R forty, excuse me, accepting, uh, appointment as the receiver, the court-appointed receiver for the Lake Shore Hospital Authority. The board will recall at its last meeting, uh, you authorized my office to file a petition on behalf of the county to seek a receivership. Uh, we discussed at that time how unusual this was. Um, on September twenty-first, we filed a petition, uh, with the circuit court. Uh, we explained to the court's judicial assistant, uh, the circumstances and were granted a hearing, uh, on September twenty-third before Judge Mark Feagle. County Manager Kraus, uh, and Assistant County Manager Kirby attended on behalf of the county. Uh, Mr. Dale Williams, the, uh, executive director for the authority, as well as Fred Coverline attended for the authority, uh, and obviously argued on behalf of the county. Uh, Judge Feagle conducted about a fifteen-minute hearing. He took the matter under advisement and later that afternoon he entered an order. And I do want the court to note the order. There are several provisions that I think are important for the board's consideration this evening. Number one is you are appointed as receiver for the hospital authority. You do not become a hospital authority. Uh, I think we talked about this last time. Uh, that authority is, is appointed by the, the governor. You're certainly not. The appointment also requires, uh, that you formally accept, which is the item that's on the agenda for this evening, that the resolution would, would constitute the acceptance. And the important thing I want you to note is the events of dissolution that are on the last page of the order, page fifteen of your agenda packet. There are currently three appointees to the authority. In the event the governor appoints a fourth member, this will immediately be dissolved. And that's in the judge's order. And the reason for that is at that point, the authority can obtain a quorum and the need for the receivership, disappears. The other thing that could trigger a dissolution would be the passage of a special act into law, providing for dissolution of the authority. Obviously, if the authority is dissolved, it doesn't need a receiver anymore. We would just follow the special act. Or if the authority does not obtain a quorum for a period of time, uh, under chapter one eighty-nine and goes through the statutory dissolution process. Uh, but in I, in any of those events, uh, we would dissolve this receivership. This is not a receivership that's intended to, uh, be perpetual or last for a really long period of time. It's, it's really just to fill the gap for so long as the authority doesn't have the ability to manage its own affairs for, for lack of a quorum. Um, so with that, Commissioner, I would ask that the board consider the resolution accepting appointment as receiver, and I'll entertain any questions.
Board?
I make a motion to accept resolution number twenty twenty-one R dash forty.
I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have anybody want to speak on this? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Barbara Limley. I have been following the Lake Shore Hospital Authority for over a decade. I'm here to discuss this resolution, the resolution to turn over control of the authority assets to the county under receivership. The emergency petition filed by Joel Foreman for an appointment of receiver for the Lake Shore Hospital Authority of Columbia County has errors that were presented to the court. On page one for the emergency petition, uh, Joel Foreman stated the legislature will not convene until March twenty twenty-two. This is incorrect. The Florida Legislature meets in session every year for sixty consecutive, consecutive days. The session opens on the second Tuesday after the first Monday in January of each even-numbered year. To my knowledge, twenty twenty-two is an even-numbered year. So it doesn't meet in March, it meets on January the eleventh. On page two of the same petition filed with the court, item number ten is correct in that it states it does not have enough members to have a quorum. However, the enabling legislation states one of the board members has to be a physician on staff with the hospital. This is impossible because there's no entity operating the hospital and has not been since September. Furthermore, when the hospital ceased operation in September of last year, Dr. Thompson remained on the board even though he did not meet the statutory requirements because there was not a hospital. The board attorney nor the executive dress, executive direct, executive director addresses situation. In the order prepared by Joel Foreman and reviewed by Fred Coverline, the hospital authority attorney and signed by Circuit Judge Feagle also contained orders. Paragraph two states the legislature will not convene till March twenty twenty-two, and that is incorrect as stated previously. The legislature convenes on January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Number seven is correct in that the governor's office has not appointed a fourth board member. However, appointing a fourth board member would not make it a legal board per the enabling legislation. Enabling legislation states that one member will be a physician on staff at the hospital. There is no entity operating the hospital. Events of dissolution, item number one, would be correct as stated before. If one of the board members were appointed, but again, there's no hospital.
Miss Limley, you're making your point three or four times.
Well, sometimes it takes three or four times for you guys to get it. The amended notice of hearing was filed with the court at six P.M. on the twenty-second. The twelfth-hour notice of this hearing derived me, my right and others to participate in this court hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any comments? Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, of Mr. Williams, would you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will be brief. For the benefit of the public, uh, I, yesterday, as executive director, submitted a letter of request to the board asking that you postpone the adoption of the authority's budget for tonight and reschedule for the twenty-first. I will give you an explanation as to why. As you heard, Mr. Foreman state, these are unusual circumstances. And because they're unusual, there's not an awful lot of historical data that we can, uh, use to guide ourself. But as we got closer to tonight's meeting, we realized that there were some things that we thought we could improve upon and should improve upon. So it's our intent to try to do this as clean and as easy as possible. And, uh, this gives us that opportunity. Those things specifically being, in the order itself, it says it has to be filed with the court. This will provide time to allow it to be filed with the court before you act on it. The authority is a special district. And because we're a special district, we have to provide communications, media, technology access to authority business. As a component of your regular budget, we weren't quite sure that that would be willdy for someone who might be watching and want to call in and ask a question. So we are now able to clarify that. It becomes pretty obvious, based on the statement that Mr. Foreman made, that we need to have a completely separate agenda for the authority's business. And so after having noticed and looked at those things, we just thought it would be best for everyone if we not rush it, we come back on the twenty-first. That way, there is no, uh, there is no arguing about the procedural side of it. Uh, from the legal side, uh, we believe we're fine. We believe the receivership is intended to do exactly what was stated. Uh, as far as the future of the authority itself goes, I will just reemphasize, there's a process in statutory law for that. I don't know what's going to happen. I don't know if we'll get an appointment. I do not know if we will go, uh, be decertified. I don't know if somebody will petition the legislature. We don't know. What your action is all about, and it's very much appreciated, is these assets do not need to be left unsupervised. And as I told you when I came and requested that you consider this, that is certainly not in the public's best interest in any way. Uh, what may happen to the authority is a different matter entirely. The receivership is about making sure that the public's assets, which in this case are considerable, are safeguarded and there is oversight. So having said that, I want to personally thank each and every one of you for your efforts. David and his staff have been wonderful. Uh, we simply want to make this as easy a process as possible. So yesterday, after having reviewed every bit of information that's been supplied to me, I simply thought this was the cleaner, easier way to do this. So having said that, I would simply ask that you, uh, place this matter on the October twenty-first agenda. And I am aware that that meeting will start at eight thirty as opposed to five thirty.
Mr. Williams, can I ask you a quick question?
You can.
Has the authority rendered any legal opinion about the position that the fourth member has to be a physician practicing at Lake Shore?
An opinion, no, but now we clearly covered that in detail with the governor's appointments office. And my opinion was, and what I expressed to the attorney for the authority is, we've disclosed it, we made sure they knew it's in the special act that created it, and they can deal with it as they see best. But as far as us telling them what it meant, no, we did not.
Well, for the board's edification, the, uh, section three of the charter, the, the, the special act says that the governing authority shall consist of seven members. There's, there's a quorum, a separate quorum requirement that says a quorum shall be constituted by four members. It does say that one of the seven members must be a doctor with privileges at Lake Shore. I do not construe this as meaning one of those four has to be a doctor with privileges at Lake Shore. And the reason that's important to you is if the governor does in fact make an appointment, triggering the dissolution of the receivership, we want to understand that we're going back to a legal body. I'm of the opinion it would be. And, and I think that's an important clarification in light of the questions that were asked earlier. Is that your position also?
That's my position also. I believe if there is an issue as it relates to that, then they will address it through the governor's office and we will be notified of such.
But you'd be satisfied you had a quorum if you had four people and none of them was a doctor?
Absolutely. And there is some precedent for that in the state. There have been other special districts that had a special requirement for trustees, so I'm told. And because they did not have a full, uh, list of appointments, they did not appoint for every slot. Uh, that was not met until sometime later, and they were allowed to exist and function as intended.
Does that raise any questions? I just want to make sure that was clear. We are, I mean, optimistically, we would like to trigger a dissolution, a, a dissolution of the receivership because I think it makes everybody's lives easier. And I just want to make sure that we're clear on that in case that does in fact happen.
So at this point, we need a motion to move this agenda item to the twenty-first, meeting on the twenty-first.
So, second.
Got a, got a motion and a second? Or I'll make the motion?
Ron did.
Oh, Ron made it, okay. So we got a motion and a second, all in favor of moving this to twenty-first? Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, very much, thank you.
Joe, just a clarification. If there is no hospital in operation, how can you have a, someone on the board that said?
You can't, no, that can't.
So you can't.
It's impossible.
So we're doing what we can do to take care of these assets that the board, the hospital authority has, and we have a judge that's given us permission to do this, right?
Yes, sir. The, the, the issue that you're dealing with with the receivership is the fact that they only have three members. What I want to be clear about is this fourth member, in my opinion, and I think in the authority's opinion, does not have to be the person sitting in that doctor's seat. They could have six members that are, that are not the doctor working at Lake Shore. I think under these circumstances, that seat must always remain vacant because there's no person alive that could fill it.
Okay.
Because the hospital doesn't exist.
Dale, out of curiosity, the three members that are there, uh, is their expiration time, any coming up?
I think all of them's expired. But that's part of the equation. They have been asked and they have all agreed to accept reappointment. And of course, they can continue to serve until they're replaced. But, uh, the governor's office or the governor's appointments office has been advised of that. And all three have agreed to be reappointed if it's the governor's prerogative.
All right, thank you. Any, any other questions? All right, let's move on to, uh, uh, proclamation, yeah, proclamation. I'm going to read that at this time. And then, uh, Ms. Buckham, if you want to come up and, uh, and say a few things after I read it, that'd be fine. And then we'll present it to you. Okay, proclamation twenty twenty-one P dash eleven. A proclamation by the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners designating the month of October twenty twenty-one as pharmacist month in Columbia County, Florida. Pharmacist months. Whereas pharmacy is one of the oldest of the health professions concerned with the health and well-being of all people. And whereas today, there are more than twenty thousand pharmacists registered in the state of Florida, providing services to ensure the safe and effective use of all medications. And whereas pharmacists have extensive education and expertise on drugs and medication therapy, which makes them ideally suited to work collaboratively with patients and their healthcare team members to improve medication use and outcomes. And whereas pharmacists provide patients with expertise, knowledge and accessibility, all crucial factors to support improvement in our nation's public health. And whereas, as frontline providers throughout the healthcare system and community, during the COVID nineteen pandemic, pharmacists and pharmacy personnel have ensured the public is cared for even at risk of exposure. And whereas the American Pharmacists Association, the Florida Pharmacy Association, and the county of Columbia County, Florida have declared October as pharmacist month in recognition of the contribution that pharmacists and pharmacy technicians provide for the health of our society with the theme, Know Your Pharmacists, Know Your Medicine. Now therefore, the County Commission of Columbia County, Florida do hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-one as pharmacist month in the county of Columbia County, Florida. And in doing so, urge all our citizens to acknowledge the valuable services of pharmacists to provide safe, affordable and beneficial pharmaceutical care services products to all citizens. Board of County Commissioners, Columbia County, Florida, Rocky Ford Chairman. You want to come up? I'll let you say a few things, then we'll do the presentation.
Sorry. Thank you, Barbara. Thank you for giving me just a few moments of your valuable time. I wanted to point out several things that you may or may not be aware of in relationship to pharmacists and the profession of pharmacy. Those pharmacists and those technicians of which you all are aware are those people that work in a community pharmacy such as Bea, uh, Walmart, uh, Winn-Dixie and some of the others' publics. Uh, those pharmacists provide the greater services to the majority of the public. We also have interns. Interns are those students who either are in school in the college of pharm, in a college of pharmacy and/or those who have graduated but are not yet fully registered pharmacists. They have to have an, an intern's license. We also have technicians. As of about seven or eight years ago, it was, um, the board finally agreed to have the legislature approve of the fact that all persons working in a pharmacy who work directly with medications, who work with and supportive of pharmacists, needed to be registered in the state. The purpose of that was to give those individuals a little more responsibility in that they needed to be accountable for their actions. This reduced a lot of drug diversion because many of the non-pharmacists were indeed stealing drugs. I had the opportunity several years ago to work with someone that had constantly appropriated a lot of Xanax. And this child did not need a lot of Xanax, but she was selling it because she felt she was not making enough money as a pharmacy tech. That's a personal issue. There's also a classification of pharmacists that you may not be aware. That's called a consultant pharmacist. A consultant pharmacist must be on record for each and every sealed nursing facility. That includes your hospitals. It includes adult congregate living facilities. And it includes all nursing homes within the state of Florida. What the consultant pharmacist is required to do is to verify and review each and every patient's of that particular facility's, uh, chart every month. Must sign off on it. And the idea is to make recommendations and suggestions that the physician needs to be aware of for possible lab tests, uh, review the medications and how the patients are reacting towards certain things. And this is just as a check because the physicians, again, are required only to visit their patients once a month. Another classification of pharmacist, of which most of us have no knowledge whatsoever, are those who, who prepare the radioisotopes that are used for a lot of tests. Personally, when I had a bone scan years ago because I had fallen and I had to have a total bones, bone scan, I had to take, I had to appear three hours prior to the appointed bone scan time so that I could drink a substance, which was a radioisotope. It needed time to be infused throughout and distributed throughout my body so that I could have a bone test, bone exam. And it's really cool, if you'll forgive the crude expression, but it outlines your whole body. Your whole body is basically x-rayed. And it was able to point out the problems that I had had from a fall, which affected my wrist as well as my knees. More recently, pharmacists, as well as those that are certified, students and/or technicians, uh, have to take additional classes and be recertified each and every year to qualify to give immunizations. The immunizations concept has become very prominent within the last five years, especially during this past year with the COVID injections. Whether you may or may not be aware, most of the COVID injections have been given, not by farm, not by physicians, not in their offices, not in the public health departments, but in individual pharmacies or special events where pharmacists and their staff are eligible and come into the pharmacy. Many of the people, you've seen lines at publics, you've seen lines at Winn-Dixie and probably Walmart. I personally don't know because I received my injections in a separate, uh, facility. So for statistics, if you're interested, in the county of Columbia, we have on the website for the Florida Board of Health under pharmacy, a hundred and thirty-nine listed. However, of those hundred and thirty-nine, twenty-eight are retired and not actively practicing. Eight have passed and have gone to the pharmacy in heaven. So that leaves a net one hundred and three in the county of Columbia. There are ten interns listed. We have no college of pharmacy in the county of Columbia. But we do have students who attend various universities throughout the state. And in case you're interested, we have nine colleges of pharmacy in the state of Florida. Some are private, some are public. We have in Columbia County, two hundred and seventy-seven technicians that are scheduled. But going through and counting each and every one, those that are continually active are one hundred and sixty-six. Now, the technicians provide a very valuable service to every pharmacist. I have always said that a pharmacist is only as good as their weakest technician, and that's really true. If you individually think about the people that you work with and that work for you to make you look good, they do the statistics, they do the bookwork, they do a lot of the nitty-gritty stuff that you need in order to present your facts and to, they assemble the facts basically for you. That's what your staff does so that you can decide what you want. By the same token, technicians process the prescriptions, they meet with, meet with the patients, they intake the prescriptions, they put them in the computer, and a pharmacist will go and review each and every prescription. Then the, and release, basically release the prescription so it can be filled appropriately. The technician often fills the prescription. Then the pharmacist rechecks it before its final disposition and put in a bag or somehow dispensed to each and every patient. And I appreciate your time and courtesy. Please appreciate your pharmacist, whether you have an individual one or a group. But please appreciate them because we really work our buns off. It's very difficult standing for nine, ten, eleven, twelve hours. Many times, we do not get to go to the bathroom, which sounds silly, but it's true. Indeed, Walmart, the la, the newer Walmarts have their own bathroom so that the pharmacists do not have to physically leave the pharmacy. Uh, other people, um, take advantage of breaks. Many times, we do not get lunch. Theoretically, it may be closed, but we may be trying to catch up because everyone, because we're so far behind. And thank you very much again.
Thank you, Ms. Buckham. We do appreciate our pharmacists. Okay, uh, public hearings, Joe?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Uh, first item, uh, for adoption hearing this evening is ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash eleven. The board will recall, I requested setting adoption hearing, uh, about a month ago. This is a, uh, resolution that if adopted, or excuse me, an ordinance that if adopted, will set, uh, for the, for the November twenty twenty-two, uh, general election, excuse me, a half-cent sales tax referendum, uh, certax, uh, in favor of the school board. School board has requested, uh, placement of this item on the ballot. And the resolution adopted by the school board is attached to the ordinance, uh, to provide more information. Uh, again, the only thing that's being asked of the board is to use its authority under Florida law to place items on the ballot. I do know that Supervisor Carwell is here to answer any questions that you might have. And I would ask that the public hearing be opened.
So open a public hearing at this time? Is anybody here to speak for or against this? Not seeing anyone with a close-up hearing. Superintendent, would you like to speak or say something on this?
I thought Joel said you were supervisor. Joel said you were supervisor.
Did I call him the supervisor? Superintendent, I apologize.
I have been called worse.
You didn't even catch it.
I did catch it.
I followed the legislature.
Did you get it, Lex?
I did catch it, but I've been called worse.
Look it up where you live.
As of today, I've been called worse. I was gonna, anyway, I just want to thank the board for your consideration in this matter. On behalf of the school board, we, the school board approved this in July. It, it's about the future. We're not asking y'all to support it tonight, although I will be asking you to support it later. We're just simply asking you to put it on the ballot. We believe strongly that the class of 2035, the senior class of 2035, is already in our school system. We believe those children need the best education and the best facilities they can have. So the plan, just for the public's knowledge, and I will be doing many workshops publicly at all the schools that are affected, I would like to come back to this commission and do a brief presentation, 15 minutes. That what I put before you tonight is three pages out of about a 25-page PowerPoint that I would like to come back and do the whole PowerPoint for you, maybe first of the year. But, but we believe completely that we've got four schools that are built in the 50s, Niblack, Five Points, Eastside, Melrose. And so the plan, it's a two-phase plan. The first phase would be to move the kids out of Niblack Elementary School for one year, build back a two-story school that would host, hold about 700 students there so that we would have those students back in that school. Then once those students came back in that school, move kids out of Eastside, build the school on the Eastside property, and then have Melrose and Five Points up for surplus. So it would take our blueprint from 14 schools to 12 schools. It would save us almost $1 million a year in operational expenses down the road. But we believe it's the right thing to do. Those kids and those schools right now are getting a good education, just to rest everybody in the public's mind. They're getting a good education today in 2021. But every day, I believe, they get further behind with technology and the enhancements that are at other schools that are built since then. And so we ask all the public to obviously support this, but tonight, we're just simply asking you to put it on the budget. Every school will get something out of this. Every school will be brought up to better standards. For those that have been around a while, we used to levy two mills. The state doesn't allow us to levy two mills anymore for construction and maintenance. We now levy just 1.5. That stopped in 2007, '08. We've lost about $18 million from the school district that we could have used to levy to keep these up. Fort White Elementary School's got one of our oldest buildings down there. We call it the fort, and we're putting kids in there today. We would like to build, part of this will be to build a wing there and have those kids come out of the fort. We will not tear the fort down. We will discuss with the county and the city who would, you know, maybe want to take over it and use it for some other purposes of historical value. Every school wins, though, and so we just ask your support on putting this on the ballot and letting the voters decide. So, thank you, sir, and I would entertain any questions y'all might have.
Any questions?
Chair, I would proudly make a motion to accept ordinance number 2021-11. As Superintendent said, this is an investment in the future, and it's a must, and I'm definitely going to vote for it, just to be on the record, Lex.
Commissioner Williams, did you have something? Do you want to add to this? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Lex, I am real pleased to see that we as a community don't have to fight for Niblack again.
Sir, you'll, you'll.
We have done that twice, and if, if this plan is carried out, then Niblack will be in the community for a long time, and making that kind of investment in the community.
Yes, sir. Niblack is a great property located on 100. It's just so many things. Well, it used to be called 100, I think Baskin-Narson now, I'm sorry. But yeah, it's just, it just brings a lot to the table, and so we're excited about the possibility of this being approved by the voters. But, but it, it's, it just has so much potential and so much positive that I would hope that that the half penny, or the penny, the half penny, does not stand in the way of us doing this, but that's discussions for later on down into year 2022, as I'll, I'll be talking more about it. So I would entertain more questions.
I would just like that. This is a bold and aggressive plan, and I think Columbia County needs to start doing some of these bold and aggressive plans.
Thank you, sir.
We've been lagging behind for a while, and I think it's time for action.
And if I might, I'd just like to point out again, it's about those kids in 2035. And that, we don't realize, the VPK kids that are in our schools right now, that is the graduating class in 2035, and I don't know where y'all will be, but I hope I'm somewhere retired, rocking in a chair somewhere. But, but it's my job, it's my job to lead this school district in good shape, and so I believe this will help. So thank y'all for your attention.
Okay, I've got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, Joe?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. The next item for adoption hearing is ordinance number 2021-10. It is the amended and restated flow control ordinance. You'll recall, we recently changed our solid waste provider contract. As a matter of fact, you're going to be ratifying that later this evening, and with that, we wanted to tighten some regulations for Class III waste haulers. While we were doing that, I worked with staff to just go through and basically tighten up some of the language in the flow control ordinance. So there's not a lot of substantive changes, other than the definition of franchise haulers expanded, and we've included the violations for operating outside the franchise in the ordinance itself. If there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain them, but otherwise, I would ask to open the public hearing.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Anybody here to speak for or against this? Not seeing anyone. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments, sir?
I moved with adopt the flow control ordinance, and I had a, after a second, I had a question for Kevin.
Second.
Kevin, your, your meeting with the, with the haulers that be doing container service, that meeting went, went great. You all made sure that they understood, I'm talking to you and the attorney, made sure they understand that we meant business, we mean business, and we're not going to tolerate them breaking this ordinance.
Yes, sir, we had a very good meeting. I think everybody was, I know everybody was on the same page, which led, as Mr. Foreman indicated, to the final negotiations with our main provider, in this case Waste Pro. They concurred, they were at the same meeting, and as a result, we tightened up a little language post that meeting, as Mr. Foreman just indicated, what's on the table tonight. Yes, sir.
And, I'm sorry. Commissioner, the, the theme of the meeting was that we had now officially leveled the playing field, and since we had leveled the playing field, we expected everybody on it to play fair. And I will commend Mr. Kirby in being much more plainspoken than I am about what would happen if people stepped out of the lines, but I also, I legaled it up to a little bit, so. But I do believe if, if anybody walked out of that meeting without a clear understanding, that's on them, it's not on us.
Or, this, this flow control order does not affect the city.
No, sir.
It does not affect the city.
No, sir. Correct.
Okay, that's all I have. I just wanted to make sure that, because we stand a chance of losing a lot of revenue if we don't police this, this order.
Let me check that, though, Commissioner. It doesn't affect the city in terms of their contract with their waste hauler. It does control where waste generated inside the city can go. It's still got to go to our landfill. So it's kind of a two-part. We don't control who their vendor is, but anybody hauling waste within our territorial boundaries has to go to our landfill.
Correct.
Has it got two answers?
Well, I, I, I saw something yesterday in, in the truck. I followed where the containers went back to, but the direction the truck was coming from, it wasn't coming from Winfield. And I, and I just figured, I'm going to check and see if that's in the city. If it's in the city, then they have the right to do different. Am I right?
Any waste generated inside Columbia County must be dumped at our landfill, regardless of where in the county it's generated.
Oh, wow.
Now, now who the solid waste services provider is within the city is up to the city. Does that make sense? But they still, because we have that county landfill, and you were here when everything got, you know how flow control works, we have to make sure all the waste is going there.
Well, it was, it was a container service that you said we probably going to have problem with, that on landfill, it was them.
Understood.
And, and they didn't come from Winfield.
Understood. Yes, sir. We'll, we'll make a note of it, for sure.
And, and I think we've talked about it, it's going to be kind of up to the other haulers to help us enforce.
Yes, sir.
And I think they will.
Yes, sir. That was very much impressed on them. Not so much that, hey, we think you should do it, but hey, you better be looking over your shoulder because you can bet your competitors are going to be watching you. That was how we communicated it. And, and I mean, I saw some eyes kind of jogging around the room when we said that. Again, if there were any misunderstandings or, or lack of understanding, or if they didn't get the message, that, that's on them, because I can tell you, it was repeated many times in the space of about an hour.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Also move we adopt the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, Councilman, we'll move on with you.
All right. Commissioners, next item for consideration is an amendment to the county manager, manager's employment agreement. I advised you a couple meetings back that we had an issue with retroactive pay to compensate Mr. Kraus additionally for his time he served as interim county attorney, county manager. He does enough, he doesn't need my job. Interim county manager. However, it was very clear, it was clear then, it's clear now, that the board certainly intended to compensate Mr. Kraus for what he did. And so we, Mr. Kraus and I discussed that. He went to the clerk and got a calculation of about how much money he would have been paid during that window when he served his interim. We used that as a base figure. We went back and forth. Ultimately, Mr. Kraus suggested and agreed that his annual pay would increase by $4,000. So this isn't a situation where he's trying to make it all up in one time. He hopes to be here for several years, and $4,000 was a number he felt comfortable with. I did not find the number to be facially objectionable, so it's really just a policy consideration on your part. Mr. Kraus's entire contract stays exactly the same, except we're taking the number 125, $125,000, and changing it to $129,000.
And I think Mr. Kraus was very fair in this calculation. So can I get a motion?
So, a second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also ask for, the next item on the agenda is request for yet another adoption hearing. The board will recall that it approved the revised redistricting maps in the first meeting in September. It's necessary for us to go through an ordinance adoption process, and then we will advertise the adoption of that ordinance in the aftermath. A copy of the proposed ordinance is enclosed with your agenda packet. I'm asking to set that for the first meeting in November with the understanding that if we are going to move that meeting for the fair, which I think there's been some discussion about that, then I would change my request to the second meeting in November.
So, let's move it to the second meeting in November?
Yes, sir.
All, can I get a motion?
I'm going to move it to the second meeting in November.
Second. The second? Second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, second, let's move to the second meeting in November.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And then the final item that I have on the agenda for this evening is ratification of the new solid waste collection agreement with Waste Pro of Florida. I will tell you, we have spent months going back and forth and making sure this was exactly right. I think we got our final green light from Waste Pro sometime last Wednesday. They did go into operation on October 1st in reliance on this contract pursuant to their agreement, so I'm asking the board to ratify it with an effective date of October 1st, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kirby?
Joel, while Kevin's coming up. We did give Sentry a year extension, wasn't that on that? Was it a year extension on there? Because we were.
We did.
So, y'all need to get to work on the Sentry.
Yes, sir. Now, this, you're, you're exactly, that'll be the next one on deck, but that'll, that'll definitely be a 2022 project.
Yes, okay.
Okay, Mr. Kirby, resolution number 2021 R41.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have two items for your consideration this evening. The first is the SCOP agreement for the widening and resurfacing of Northwest Leonia, Northwest Queen, Northwest Shambria, and Northwest Winfield. Mr. Chairman, I'm requesting a motion to approve and execute the SCOP agreement for the widening and resurfacing of Leonia, Queen, Shambria, and Winfield, along with resolution 2021 R41.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comment? All in favor?
Thank you. The second one is a supplemental agreement for Cypress Lake and Charles Road. Nothing's changing on this. This is basically a paperwork cleanup on the DOT side. So Columbia County has partnered with FDOT to gain support for, for the purchasing of $905,000 set to be released from Cypress Lake Road project. FDOT has agreed to an extension of the base project, which will support the paving of Charles Road. For fiscal accounting and to ensure public transparency, FDOT has asked the county to execute, execute the supplemental agreement to support the release of $905 and prior fiscal year 2020 funding. So basically, you're separating the two projects because geographically you've added another road. So I'm requesting a motion to approve and execute supplemental agreement to support the release of $905,000.
I'll make a motion. We approve and execute the agreement with FDOT for $905,000 for Cypress Lake and Charles. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Mr. Kraus?
Thank you very much. First item I have on the agenda is Budget Amendment 2021-41. I don't know why it says budget amendment. It's not a budget amendment, but it's a policy. And the policy is the revision of the COVID policy. The COVID-19 return, leaving and return to work protocols policy. So basically, this establishes protocols for people to return and leave from work. It also establishes what the board had asked us to do, which is deal with the fact that COVID leave ended at the end of the pandemic, when the governor released the state of emergency, and COVID continues. And so people have to take COVID leave, they continue to have exposures. This would restore their ability to have COVID leave after the end of the pandemic, or after the end of, not the pandemic, but the state of emergency is declared by the state. Under the policy, an employee may receive up to 80 hours of COVID leave for any event after June 1st, June 3rd, which is when the governor ended the state of emergency, depending on the prior usage of COVID's leave, and would be reimbursed their personal leave that they had used during that period if it were for COVID. It places a responsibility, provide the documentation that their leave is for COVID on the employee. In addition, based on what the school board does and other people do, we did put in there a proposal for a one-time $500 incentive to encourage employees to choose to be vaccinated. The potential budgetary impact of the incentive would be about $200,000 for both the Board of County Commissioners, as well as the Constitutional Officers. This obviously can be separated into pieces or approved as a whole, depending on what the board's preferences.
Well, staff, I, I appreciate the work that's went into this. Me and Davis had numerous conversations on this. Also reached out to Department of Health in Tallahassee and talked to Tom's office today. Just to point out to the other commissioners, if they're not aware, what says protocol, sets protocols include employee proof to return to work, doctor note negative test, et cetera. These can be all things, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention that the letter that each COVID patient gets from the Department of Health should be put in there and distinctly pointed as, related to that note, that that's acceptance to come back to work. should be put in there and distinctly pointed as related to that note that that's acceptance to come back to work. Because as you go on and read into this policy, it talks about, uh, what do you call it, the simple test or the fast test or whatever they call it. But it it gets into detail of that and 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 I know we need to have protocol how they come back to work, but that, if you test positive in the state of Florida, the Department of Health, when they call your house, get your data and all the information. If you're cordial to them and you relay the information to them, you are going to get a letter from the Department of Health. And they plainly states on that when you are set, when you are liable to go back to work. So that's, uh, that's one of my pet peeves onto that. And, uh, and the, and I personally, uh, would like to see the, uh, $500 incentive removed. I, I, I'm sure I went back and listened to me, I didn't put that into my, I don't know how it got in there, don't know how the conversation got in there. But for whatever reason, I don't support that. And I'd hate to see a good policy like this go to play, but I can't vote for this and support that.
Commissioner Murphy is correct. The letters from the Board of Health clearly state when you can return to work. And that should be acceptable documentation.
So David, fill us in on the clerk position on retroactive pay or are we, uh?
I don't know that he's here, but basically the clerk has concerns with having to go back and find the documentation of who would get restored leave. It puts a burden on them because they maintain our payroll records. Uh, and, um, they do feel it is somewhat of an onerous burden that is placed on them to have to go back and do all that research.
I had a conversation with, uh, you and Kevin yesterday about this. And, uh, talk to the, talk to the board about what kind of, what we talked about about doing the vacation, uh, just adding two weeks of vacation to the people that haven't took off for this.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's the only like the simplest way to me to solve this problem with the, with the issues the clerks brought up and stuff. And, uh, and me personally, I like that idea. So kind of if you would explain that to.
So during the period of the declared emergency, uh, if somebody got COVID or had to take COVID leave or their office was closed for COVID reasons and they had to stay home, they all got 80 hours worth of leave that was not charged to their personal leave or to their sick leave. They got COVID leave. This was a policy that was created by the federal government. We were in compliance with the federal government policy. We actually went above the federal government policy and extended it through the entire duration of the state's declared state of emergency. And that was what the governor, the government, the federal government mandated we do. You had a lot of employees that were considered essential employees that never took off, took zero leave during that time, um, and did not take advantage of COVID leave. Therefore, now if they get COVID, they would have to use their sick leave, they can't fall back on COVID. So the discussion was a simpler approach might be to just, if you take all of the employees that did not use COVID leave during the time and give them that two weeks added to their leave, then if they get COVID or they get exposed or whatever, they would have that time available to them. And they would be held whole.
Why would you add it to the vacation time and not the sick time when?
You could add it to either. Yes, you could add it to the sick leave and that way they would just take that additional sick leave.
And that way it wouldn't be a budget impact either, guys, it would just be, they would just be employees off from work that time.
It would piecemeal it, not be all at once.
So anybody who did not use their 80 hours of COVID leave would get 80 hours of sick leave.
So basically, you compensate the ones that didn't get the 80 hours by just giving them a, a, a two-week vacation added to their pay.
I think Mr. Kirby has a comment.
Which makes them whole, they, they actually deserve it compared, you know, to me.
And we just approved the, uh, the contract for David for his, uh, for when he was, was paying him to be interim county manager because you can't go back and pay retroactive.
Mr. Kirby has a comment.
Just for clarification purposes, put it real simple terms, back in the time when we were ordered, any non-essential employees, they went home irregardless. It was just, you, that was the start of the pandemic. And I remember trying, it was so difficult for me to determine who was essential versus non-essential in that particular case. What Mr. Kraus is, is referring to, it wasn't like they were positive or even thought they were positive. They simply went home for two weeks on COVID pay, healthy as an ox. So the thought process here is COVID pay expired. So when this all got kicked around and, Mr. Murphy, we completely agreed, it's somewhat fair. So when it got tossed around, it become cumbersome on the clerk side, the thought process was, okay, let's keep this simple. Those guys that simply were not afforded the opportunity of COVID pay because they were considered essential, it's a list, right? You simply go back and say, since you were not afforded that to make it whole at a non-budgetary impact, as Commissioner Whit indicated, it's a vacation, irregardless, it really doesn't cost you money out of your pocket. It will cost you operationally because they'll be off. But it does balance the books because on my side of things, that's all I heard. Lord have mercy, during storms, same thing happens. Y'all go to work, everybody else goes home, test their family. I get during the COVID thing, Lord, I'm tired of being essential. It was nice to be essential, but they get punished a lot. That is the thought process today. If a guy catches COVID and has to be out, he never was afforded that luxury of the feds or state, whoever told us, send all those people home. So I literally back then went and said, you stay, you go, you take two weeks off. I did like half staff of non-essential, you take two weeks off, you guys come back, the next non-essential, take two weeks off. Had nothing to do with were they sick or not, it was during that time of a panic, if you may, just reduce the employees. So I just want to clarify, it wasn't if somebody caught COVID, had sickness of COVID, it was flat out a free two weeks off.
Mr. Chairman, it's just a question of fairness, you gotta do it, so, you know.
And you can look, that applies to your firefighters, it applies to your dispatchers. Anybody who had a position that you could not afford to let go home for two weeks.
Well, the point that if you, if you add it to their sick leave, and I'm sorry, did I interrupt somebody now? Okay, if you add it to their sick leave at the end of their venture, if you want to say with the county, you, you, you pay them out for a certain percentage of that also, correct? Fifty percent. So, you know, it's, uh, that's a good point, I like it, you know.
Commissioner Murphy, if I may, Mr. Chair, also if you put it towards the vacation, employees only allowed to roll over 352 hours or they lose it. I just wanted to throw that in there, irregardless of which route, if the board decides to go, either which way, with the exception of the end of their career, it's not a budgetary impact. Now, if you really want to get down to brass dollars, because you can only roll over 352. I guess if you're looking for long-term effect, if you do the sick leave side of things, it's unlimited how much you can bill. You get compensated, well, I say that, is there a ceiling on that? Yeah, so you get compensated 50% of all of your sick leave upon tenure, is that right?
Yes.
So if you look at it financially, you're probably better off to put it on the vacation side, simply because you can only roll over 352 hours. That makes sense.
And the reason there's no ceiling on sick leave is it's there for catastrophic leave, you know.
Well, I mean, my, my point in sick leave was, I thought the point where we, where we started all this was to address the fact that the 40 hours leave time, you know, it has run out, or what is 40, was it 40 or 80? Eighty, eighty hours of leave, freely from the feds has run out, that, that's run out. And so now if anybody in the future catches COVID, they're using their sick time. Now, I wasn't looking at this to address the unfairness of the very beginning of COVID when some got to go home and some didn't, I was looking at it more, well, some got COVID and took advantage of the 80 hours back then. And now if new people catch COVID, they don't have that. And that's why I was suggesting it's a sick leave problem and not a, not a vacation leave problem. But you're really dealing with two problems right now.
Well, it, it really is, but the problem is people that never had COVID still got two weeks of leave. So we're just trying to make everybody whole, you know what I mean? They got two weeks of leave and a lot of those people didn't get COVID.
But that's not the problem that triggered this. The problem that triggered this was we have no way of giving people leave if they get sick, you know, right now because that's run out. And so I, I think you're dealing with two situations.
Well, the whole thing is the first set of people that got two weeks off didn't have to be sick, didn't have to be anything.
I understand that.
So if later they got sick, they've already had their two weeks, they, they really.
And one of the problems I thought we was trying to solve is we've had people that has caught COVID that had to take two weeks off, that didn't have two weeks pay to get to take off. That lost that pay, is that correct?
Where people voluntarily donated leave.
The people in the beginning that got the two weeks off that were sent home, whether they had COVID or not, are whole. If they got COVID, they got, they got, or have already been paid for those two weeks they had to leave. Even if they have to use it, they still got paid and were off. So it, it's just a question of fairness to the essential employees.
Again, I think you're dealing with two separate situations, two separate problems.
And, and even though I support the theory, what, uh, Mr. Kirby and, uh, Commissioner, I mean, Chairman, uh, Ford was saying, I, I agree with Toby 100%. I was sent, you know, when the people came to I and simply said, you know, I, I basically used up all my time. And these were a few, uh, uh, different cases where maybe they were out for three weeks for whatever reason. And I simply made the motion as to how can we make these people whole on 80 hours, 80 hours, flat out 80 hours of if they're out on a COVID situation, plain and simple. But of course, it arises other situations like Kevin's saying, and, uh, you know, it's, it's something, uh, I, I, I personally, we came here to solve the motion that I put into place and, and get everybody's opinion. Now, these are some valid points, but I, I just don't know if I'm willing to not put words in Toby's mouth, but I'm, I'm not sure I'm willing to absorb that into this, you know, because we're talking about two different animals here. Because no one of us five, nor administration or nothing, that was a mandate by the government that said, non-essential, you go home.
That was mandated by the federal government.
And, uh, and, you know, and, and it's, it's the luck of the draw, I hate it as bad as I hate it. But like Kevin said, he shuffled them in and out and, uh, you know, that's, that's a bad deal. I, I get it, but just to be clear, that wasn't my point here. But, you know, I know as you go to digging into these things, you, you know, you pull back the blankets, there's, uh, somebody that wasn't there when you put the blankets up.
Okay, so. Well, and, and that's why I say if you, I mean, maybe if you put it to sick time, you know, it, that's, that, that, that better solves the problem because you're bolstering their sick time. So in the future, if somebody gets COVID and has to be out long-term, you've added eight hours to their sick time.
But, but see, we're still, the people that got off for two weeks may have never gotten sick. They were paid for 80 hours whether they got sick or not. What happened with the essential employees, they were never given 80 hours. And they get sick now, one gets sick now, they have to take off for COVID and use their time. Whereas the people before, when they got sick, yes, they had to use their leave, but they had already gotten two hour, two weeks of free pay and didn't have to work. So we're just trying to.
Sick leave, you're still accomplishing the same goal.
But the one thing that bothered me about it, what Kirby said, if they, they only get 50% of that at the end of the, their time.
But you don't get any vacation.
Yeah, they can take it during the year unless they collect.
Vacation day, am I correct?
Yeah. But it seems to me if.
Yes, sir, and I'm not gonna try to make this real complicated, we have a lot of firm policies. For example, I mean, I think sick time is really where it applies, it does the same thing. But, you know, I thank Commissioner Hollinsworth, and we are dealing with two things that are emerging. If you do sick time, if you take time off two days consecutive, you have to provide a doctor's note on the third day. You've got to validate that you're actually sick. So if you separate the two, sick, in my opinion, sick time is the way to go. That means if you catch COVID, you are afforded 80 hours of sick time in theory to get over the COVID. If you want to be fair, as Commissioner Hollinsworth indicated, essential versus non-essential, you would apply it to vacation because that's what happened with the mandate, they took two weeks off free.
They got, they got vacation two weeks whether they were sick or not.
So if they're, so here's my question. Somebody catches COVID, they got two weeks vacation time, can they legally take their vacation time for COVID?
Absolutely.
Okay, you take vacation time for anything.
So if you, if you get sick, if you run out of it sick leave, you can use vacation leave. If you get sick and choose to use your vacation time, we don't necessarily know that you're sick.
It's just a question.
So you do have that choice.
But David, but David, back before the, uh, before the June 3rd, 21, prior to that, somebody went out on COVID, they didn't lose no time, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
They got COVID leave, it was marked in their timesheet as COVID leave and recorded in payroll as COVID leave.
And, and, and that was simply my point.
And, Mr. Chairman.
We're talking about being laid up at the bed, sick with COVID-19 or whatever the heck else they call it. That's, that was my point.
Yeah.
And I understand it opened up this other box.
Let me state this, the federal regulation on COVID leave, absolutely if you got COVID, you took COVID leave. If you had to care for a loved one or something like that, you were allowed to have COVID leave. If your children couldn't go to daycare, federal government allowed you to use, use COVID leave. So it was a little bit broader than just getting COVID, and that was all mandated by the federal government.
I wanted to point out, if the board supports either one of these options, there needs to be a stipulation, county attorney might need to help me here. That employee should have been present and working here during those times. We don't want to get a newer employee to get this benefit, help me, attorney.
You're just saying essential employees who served during the pandemic or during the state of emergency and were held at work while non-essential employees went home. So we need to identify that window where non-essential employees did go home.
Right, I would assume.
And make sure they're working here at that time.
That June of this year, pre-June, pre-June, whenever it cut off.
It would start at March of 2020 and go to June of this year.
So if you were employed here from June whatever on, you would not be eligible, I just didn't want a person to sign up, get two weeks of whatever.
Right, so the time when you were having to send people home two weeks at a time and rotating them out, that's the window that we want this to apply to, people who were essential employees during that time.
Yes, sir, and to clarify, Commissioner Murphy, that's what muddied up the water with your proposal on the clerk side to try to capture all that math. That's where the, just two weeks, well, they go vacation or sick, which is cleaner.
Well, not, not, well, Kevin does address me, I need to, well, it's fresh on my mind, if you don't mind. I'm not gonna speak for the clerk, but the clerk does have a problem 100% of going back and for the people that donated time. And I, I just, you know, I, I reached out to, uh, Mr. Swisher and he said, but to, that would, that would cause chaos. But as far as to just go back and go into the computer, take, put 80 hours of annual leave here because that's what they took, no problem. But like I said, I'm not speaking, I, I don't want to put Jay in a position, but he, i- if it wasn't for him having to be somewhere tonight, he definitely would have been here. But, uh, uh, but that, and, and I just want to make that clear because that's the way he, he personally explained it to I this morning. I'm sorry, this afternoon.
Can I speak now, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
When, when you look at this, it's, it's kind of complex. And in a sense, Toby is right by, we're talking about two different, uh, ways to kind of skin this cat. But all I know, it need to be skinned. Uh, it, it, it just need to, 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 uh, to come to a, a decision on how we want to implement it. But it's in the best interest of our employees to do so. And, uh, it doesn't make any difference whether it's sick leave or, or, or vacation time. It's one that we feel appropriate that, uh, that, that to deal with the situation with the COVID situation. Uh, it's not fair if, if you all have said, uh, back when we was under a, a declaration where they automatically received it. And now, uh, without that declaration, you've got you sick leave or vacation leave. It's not, it, 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 it just level the playing field and let's move on whether we're gonna do sick leave or, 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 or vacation time.
I, I think for me, I, I have less sentiment. I, I think for me, I, I have less sympathy for the actions in the, the beginning stages of COVID where half the employees were declared essential and half got this, maybe it's the first responder to me because I'm always essential. You know, but I have less sympathy for that problem, that life's not fair. You know, you're an essential worker, you get hired, part of your job, you know, it wasn't fair. This guy got sent home, get over it. But at the same token, the problem I wanted to solve was that, you know, the, the sick leave problem, the, the leave problem, where you're having to use your leave because you got COVID because those federal dollars ran out. And I think maybe, and, and, and I'm not, I'm, sick leave was maybe a better place to put it because it made the statement, hey, we're taking care of this, this is why we're doing it. But I, I really have less heartburn now after thinking about it, about whether it goes to sick or whether it goes to vacation. While I'm doing it is to solve the leave problem for people who had COVID. And if that solves the other issue too, that's fine. But I, I didn't take this on to solve that first issue. We don't do, I mean, hurricanes, natural disasters happen, we do what we got to do and we move on.
And I'm all for that, but, but paying the employee five hundred dollars to get vaccinated.
No, no.
I'm not for that.
I'm not paying it.
Well, well, Mr. Chairman, I, I, a, a lot of people, and there's a lot of counties doing it. And we have forty-some odd people short now at the road department. Uh, you can't hire anybody. Now, when a person get COVID, I've been around someone at COVID, they have to quarantine for fourteen days. What this thing is doing, it'll say here's five hundred dollars is not a mandate. It's not a mandate that you have to be vaccinated. But if you do, uh, and get vaccinated, we give you five hundred dollars and you don't have to quarantine for them fourteen days. So that mean the, the, the work effect with the road department or any other office mean that you got those people back to work. And in the long run, you're going to make more than five hundred dollars. It's just that simple, it's just doing the math.
So you, so you're saying that if you catch COVID, if you're vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine?
No, if you, if you, if you vaccinated, you don't have to take a fourteen day quarantine.
Right now, in, in, according to this policy they're wanting to bring in, if you're, if you're unvaccinated and you're exposed to COVID, well, you, you have to quarantine. If you're vaccinated and you're exposed to COVID, you can come back to work as long as you don't have symptoms.
But you gotta wear the mask and you gotta do this, you gotta do that. Which David, if I'm not mistaken, and, uh, and not to cut Ron off, but this, when Toby said that, that was along the CDC line guidelines when y'all come up with that mask deal and all that?
That is correct, according to the CDC guidelines, according to what the health department gave us directions on. If you're exposed, non-symptomatic, you can return to work as long as you wear your mask and have been vaccinated.
So if a gentleman chooses not to wear a mask, he can't return to work?
That is what the recommendation is.
And I didn't say that recommendation, I said yes or no.
In this policy, yes, they have to wear the mask. Because if.
It's only a recommendation out of the CDC. You see, the reason I'm making this point here because of what me and you talked about this morning. You're opening yourself for a bunch of lawsuits.
So it is based on the CDC guidance. The policy says if you've been exposed, you've been vaccinated, you're not symptomatic, you can return to work, but you need to wear a mask so that just in case you don't expose other people.
But well, I doubt anybody at the county, if somebody's test, has tested positive for COVID, they're not going to want to work with it anyway.
Well, it's not testing positive. It's exposed, but not positive.
Like if you're exposed to someone with it.
So if you're exposed to.
Yeah, yeah, it's not if you have it, not if you have it, if you haven't.
So a perfect example would be if you're.
When you read that policy, you're.
You're getting into a lot of.
If your spouse or loved one, say, has COVID.
It, it, it's, it's no mandate. I mean, it's a person, if, if, if none of us are vaccinated, somebody say here's five hundred dollars, you want to get vaccinated? You can say yes or no. It's not making anybody get vaccinated, but it's a way to, 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 to a person that being exposed to have to be off from work for fourteen days.
So what do you do with all the employees that have already been vaccinated?
Huh?
What do you do with all the employees that already chose to be vaccinated? They, they can get it. I said, all the employees, employees that have already been vaccinated, they chose to get vaccinated. We're not going to reward them anything?
The language in the, in the document says if you prove you got a vaccination, you get the benefit. Doesn't tell you when you got it, if you bring them the card, they'll give you the benefit.
That is correct.
Well, it's, it's a lot of counties doing it, school boards and, and commissioners and city councils in the state of Florida.
I know the school boards doing it, county councils. Uh, what are we doing here?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendations with the change in number three, we're going to call it. You ain't got the number there, that an acceptable document of return to work is from the Department of Health. And in that motion, my motion will be to delete the one-time five hundred dollar incentive and to make the people whole into what we were talking about before, relevant to back when this thing started. Uh, the non-essential essentials, I don't know how to word that, it's pretty complicated. But to, uh, give them that time in sick leave, that's my motion.
But you're not, you're not including, you're not including the other leave. In other words, you, you're saying only sick leave.
That, that was my recommendation, just put it in sick, sick leave. I mean, that's my, you know, they're getting it, but that, that's just.
And they had to be here during the pandemic?
Yes, and it'd be a long motion, but yes, they'd have, have been here during that pen, employed as, as of then, correct.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor, is there a second for that motion?
Mr. Chairman, uh, on that motion, I would like to vote for the other things on it. So if, if Mr. Murphy would, would pull, uh, uh, the five hundred dollars off of his motion, so I can vote on the other item, because if he don't, I'll vote, I have to vote for, uh, against everything up there. And I'm, I'm for some of the stuff up there, but I, I cannot vote for the motion with the five hundred dollars being, being deleted.
Ms. Chair, if the, if Mr. Murphy's motion dies for lack of a second, then the floor will be open for a different motion if Commissioner Williams wants to make one.
Yeah, okay, so I.
I don't think we need, I don't think you can pass this as written tonight. I mean, it's, it goes to me, okay, so just to Commissioner Murphy's point about, you know, having a, having a statement from the health department. Um, this thing also says reflecting a negative COVID test. You know, people are testing positive for COVID months after they get it. And, and I mean, even in the healthcare profession, we're not using that anymore. You don't have to have a negative test to come to work. It's ten days, uh, when you're passed, when your sentence started, as long as you're symptom-free. Because they're, I mean, eight weeks out, they're still, you, you'll have people out for months that are perfectly well and capable of coming back for work. This, I mean, this thing's got a lot of problems.
The whole policy.
The whole thing.
And it was so detailed, I didn't have to put it all in motion.
And, you know, I, I think it, it's good it came here so we could have the discussion about some of these things and maybe give direction to go back and craft a better policy. Because, you know, with the five hundred dollar, uh, incentive, first time we've seen it at this meeting, you know, the agenda for this meeting. So you haven't heard our wishes on that. So maybe in this discussion, you can, and we can go craft a better policy. Because I think this whole thing's got just many problems that need to be corrected. Uh, the whole mask thing, I mean, you're, you're just opening up, you're opening up a big can of worms.
I, I do want to clarify the mask thing. The only thing it says is that they should wear a mask, doesn't say they have to. Because I, we're, we're, we're aware of the attitude on mask mandates. So it, it says that if you have a positive exposure, which is what's defined in here.
Okay, but by homework, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm, I just want to make it clear, we, we're not mandating masks in the workplace for anybody.
And, 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 and a, 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 almost a perfect situation happened in Orange County. Because it says almost similar exactly to what you just said. Well, they should make what have you, it didn't say you will. But my whole point is, well, they, you know, you, you got other employees, you're, we're up in a can of worms here. I asked for, when I made my motion two weeks ago, I simply made the motion, come back with a policy that simply makes the people whole in their time lost since, we'll just say June third, end of discussion. And David, you can back me up. Uh, you know, I called him up, where did this five hundred dollar thing, where did this other thing come from? You know, and I, and, you know, I, you know, if I got to put the whole, what I'm trying to accomplish here, and I think what Mr. Witt was, and I, you know, I think Commissioner Ford alluded to it and whoever else, but my point is, is that, you know, we, uh, I tried to solve a simple problem and I think we've opened up a can of worms that, and what Mr., I was unaware of what Toby Witt just said a few minutes ago, but he's got a good point, you know? It, we're getting in the CDC business.
Yeah, but to.
Chairman, do we have a second on the motion?
We don't have a second on the motion.
And, and I want to go back to something that Mr. Kirby shared with the board a couple of meetings ago. And, and so, you know, the, the policy was presented to me after it had been prepared and I punched it up. But my understanding was that we were dealing with the public health issue where somebody who had exhausted their leave, for whatever reason, came down with COVID symptoms, but came to work anyway because they didn't have leave. And so what this was trying to do was create COVID leave under a county policy so that even if you've exhausted your vacation and sick time, you can trigger this policy now. So this is extra leave, and that's why it's kind of rigid, you know? We need you to go for a rapid test that day if you're symptomatic. And if you are positive, you will stay home, you will qualify for COVID leave. There's positive exposures, I mean, you'll notice the very first part of the policy says, if you have no symptoms or have no known positive exposure, come to work. You're never going to be eligible for COVID leave, right? So you got to start triggering certain things because again, we were trying to add leave. Not the same thing as what the other commissioners have addressed this evening, which I, I fully understand. You know, some of these folks had to come to work when other people stayed home and we want to try to fix that, I get it. The issue that Mr. Kirby shared with the board was his fear that people are coming to work with COVID because they have no other leave. So that was the public he- health issue that we were trying to write this for.
But aren't we getting like way in the weeds? I mean, do you want somebody coming to work with symptoms, whether they have a positive test or not? Do you want somebody coming to work sick?
But they will if they don't have leave.
They will if they don't have this two weeks.
They got to pay their rent, they got to pay their bus bill.
I don't think it's. I know, but I mean, but you're saying, you're saying go, go get your test to trigger the two weeks.
No, 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 if you think you're sick, don't come to work, go get a test. But we want you to go that day so that we can start you on leave that day.
We're getting too bent up in if you're sick, it doesn't matter if they're sick. People, when the federal mandate came down, let's just, half of them, whatever, didn't get sick. They still got two weeks off.
Right.
We're trying to give that two weeks to the essential employees. I don't care if they get sick or not get sick. They deserve two weeks of either, I, I think vacation or sick leave. It, it's just a, we are giving them back two weeks that essentially they never got. Every other employee did, and I, if, if I were an essential employee, I wouldn't be happy about it. Everybody else got two weeks off, essential employees didn't. Let's give them two weeks however they want to take it, and then we'll worry about, and, and, and I'm not, I, I understand what your, your concern is here, but we're just, we're just making people whole. All the non-essential workers got two weeks off for nothing, but just to let them off. Essential workers got, workers got nothing.
I understand.
Zero, still don't have anything. And now if they get sick, they're going to come to work because they don't have two weeks to spare.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
What I'm hearing, and I may be wrong, I just, what I'm hearing is there's two policies you're looking at. One is to restore the leave or to give leave to those essential workers that did not get COVID leave at the beginning of pandemic period as required by law. Those people that were, had to work and did not get the leave. The other is to create eighty hours worth of COVID leave moving forward and possibly even moving backward to January or to when we stopped giving COVID leave to all employees, if they can document they had COVID. That's what I'm hearing, I don't know if that's what the board feels.
Since January the third.
Since, or June the third, yes.
June the third, I'm sorry.
So, Kirby, we don't have a second. Why don't you two just take another stab at this and bring it back to us? Write, rewrite the policy, take this back, but after you heard this discussion tonight, and then bring it back at the next meeting.
Mr. Chair, if, if I could, because I think that's exactly where we all need to go. But if there, I know the five hundred dollar incentive created a lot of discussion. If there's a feeling on the board about that, if you would entertain a motion as whether to include or exclude that, that would help us tremendously.
Okay, so we'll take a motion to exclude or include the five hundred dollars.
I'll make a motion, I'll rescind my previous motion. I'll make a motion for staff to readdress this policy, excluding the five hundred dollar incentive and bring it back to us at a latter date, preferably two weeks. That would be my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second, the motion and a second to exclude. All in favor, say aye.
Oppose.
Oh, nevermind, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I know, Commissioner Weasel, I'm just curious, how did the five hundred dollar number come up in this?
We were looking at all the COVID policies that we were aware of, and this was a very popular policy. Like I said, the school board has it, um, many counties are doing it. It's actually been queried of all the counties, which ones are interested and not interested in it. It was an incentive to encourage people to get vaccinated so that they would not lose work time.
Yeah, I mean, I, I look at this, I, I don't want the government involved in your decision to get a vaccine. I, I, I see that side of it, I get that side of it, but I also see it from another side that, you know, in our, in our health insurance plan, we give a wellness benefit if you get a physical every year. Uh, you know, you can get fifty dollars, a hundred dollars. I, I mean, I, I think five hundred dollars might be kind of coercing people, but I think, I, I don't, I don't know, maybe, maybe in, in terms of a wellness benefit, it, it, it might be beneficial. I mean, I just, I don't know, I don't know what that line crosses, but, you know, I, I don't, I think the consensus of the board is we're probably not going to do it. I just, I was just curious where the five hundred dollar number came from.
Five hundred dollar is the school board policy.
My problem with this is.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
My problem with it is, I can't ask the taxpayer to give five hundred dollars to a county employee to get a vaccine. I, I, I know that there's some issues at the end of that, you think, well, maybe not as many people get it. I, I just can't ask the taxpayer to do that, I, I can't do it. I, I, I'm usually staunch on the side of employees all the way, but I just can't do that. I can't do it.
And, and I look at it just opposite. It, 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 it's, it, it, it's coming out of, it's taxpayer dollars rather than federal dollars or local dollars. It's all taxpayer's money. But I look at it from the standpoint of productivity, uh, in the departments. If a person has to quarantine for fourteen days, you losing fourteen days of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, work in the workforce that you could, you, you, you're dealing with. And just like the road department, I said before, we got forty-some employees short out there now. But every time somebody is exposed to COVID, they got to quarantine for fourteen days because they are not vaccinated. That's up to that person whether they want to be vaccinated or not. We're not mandating that you get vaccinated. We're saying if you do, here's what we would do, and then you eligible to come to work if you've been around someone that, that, that tested positive. That's, that's all the same.
Well, one of the first questions I had from one of the employees in the county, I have antibodies, I've had COVID, I've got the antibodies. Why should I go get the vaccine if I have the antibodies? And if I've got antibodies and they're getting paid five hundred dollars for the vaccine, I should get paid my five hundred dollars too because I have the antibodies. I mean, there's, I'm just saying, you're opening up something.
There's so many thoughts.
You know?
So many thoughts. Well, the, uh.
I realize we've got a marching order to go back and revisit this. I've heard all y'all's conversation, leave out the shop business. But if we wanted to clean all this up, just really reduce the, the rules, if you may. If you did the eighty hours of sick leave, period, for those that weren't eligible, it cleans it up.
That's right.
You don't ask any questions, that gives Joe Smith, if he catches COVID, if he says he catches COVID, he's being honest. He says he's catch, and he has COVID, he's been, if he lies, he lies, that he's not getting any benefit that everybody else didn't get from the feds. So if you just say eighty hours of sick leave for those that were here during the pandemic that were not able to use the fed benefit. that were not able to use the fed benefit, it clean, assuming y'all don't want the shot, you don't say anything else. It cleans it completely up.
Right, because they'll either use it, or they, they're not going to use, they're not going to lie.
If I, if I catch COVID tomorrow, if I think I've got COVID tomorrow, I don't bring any paperwork, I don't do anything. I've got my 80 hours, just like the other guys did. Move on. Just a recommendation. It saves any argument.
So, wait a minute. So you're saying that they don't have to bring no proof that they got COVID?
What I'm saying, Commissioners, I've heard all y'all's debates.
Yeah.
What Commissioner Hollisworth is harping on is, as it says, it's two different issues. I first brought this up because of what Mr. Foreman said. I had an employee call. He said, boss, I don't have much time left. Gotcha. He said, my youngest got COVID, my wife's got COVID. I'm a little wheezy feeling. I don't have any time. What do you want me to do? Wow. What do you say to that? He, he's got to pay a light bill. I said, buddy, don't come to work. Well, I feel bad about it.
Yeah.
Okay. What I'm saying, that guy didn't know if he had COVID one way or another. He's coming to work. He's surrounded by it. He didn't feel good. Wound up testing positive. Glad I told him not to come to work. If, in this particular case, if you give them 80 hours of sick leave, it's really no cost impact to the budget whatsoever.
And, and it, and it's done because he gets what everybody else got. And then if he actually lied, let's just say an employee didn't tell the truth. Well, when he really does get COVID, when he gets it, he's got to take his own leave.
That's right.
So it's a, it's a, it's a move.
The bottom line is, your good employees are not going to abuse it anyway.
And if somebody does abuse it.
They were here anyway, but just a point, I've heard a lot of debate, it just takes everything off the table.
If you make it sick leave, I mean, if you make it vacation leave.
No, if you make it vacation leave, it's wide open. I'm trying to reduce it down.
Yeah.
If you take two days off consecutive, per policy, you have to bring a doctor's note. So you're cleaning up the guy. He might lie two days at a time, come in work a day. Then we've got a policy for that, consistency of use. There's ways to check and balance it, right? On the sick leave. Now, if you go vacation time, it's wider. Commissioner Hollisworth, that's the fairest way, vacation. But if the board wants to be, here's why we're doing this, sick leave's the fair way, there's policies to control it, irregardless of COVID or common cold. Two days off, doctor's note on the third day. If you have two days off, come in one work, two days off, one off, there's another policy about that. You can keep them pretty honest with sick leave. Just a recommendation.
You can take disciplinary action against any employee who abuses sick leave.
So it really solves itself. If a guy lies and says, I got exposed, well, he's got two weeks, which he deserves. But after that, if he gets sick or something happens, he's got to take his time.
But with the sick leave commissioner, if he says, I got exposed, day three consecutive?
Yes.
He's got to bring a doctor's note that says why he's out.
Which, which keeps it real tight. Yep.
And everybody has to prevent verification because you're only allowed so many unverified sick leaves.
And, and, and I will point out that the reason I want it to be vacation leave is because the people back when they let them off two weeks didn't have to give them any proof of anything. So it kind of, it, it really isn't the fairest way, but it, it's a way we can go if y'all.
Okay, we're going, I think we discussed this enough. Let's make a motion.
I already have. I already have, and Robby over your second.
Yeah, go vote.
Okay, we got.
That's for the $500.
For the $500.
Now, the motion was.
Yeah, he said to tell us to go back and do it, but not the 500.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second to go back and rewrite the policy and bring it back. Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Wait a second. I didn't, y'all, y'all got ahead now. This was not to go back and look at it. This was the motion that Tim Murphy made to reject the $500.
But he also said to go back and revisit it and bring it back.
They're going to bring it back. Yeah, so, in two weeks.
We, we know where we're at.
With the clean what Kevin, because Kevin just made very, very good valid points.
Really, it needs to go that way because that way we can read it and make sure we're okay with what.
Okay. And also, the public will have time to, will have an opportunity to involve themselves.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, did the motion include the deduction of the $500?
Yes, sir.
Did I vote against it?
You did.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The clerk has you as a net.
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution number 2021 R39.
Contracts with outside agencies providing recreational services. You have before you a policy, a resolution that basically states, uh, it applies to all not-for-profit organizations, youth sports organizations, and community centers doing business with the county. First and foremost, that the county will not do business nor fund any, if any board member is a sexual offender, and there's that reference to the state law and being registered, so that we would stop funding them and stop working with them if that were to fall be the case. And that's all agencies. All agencies shall provide quarterly financial statements and annual audits. All agencies shall provide liability insurance.
David, can I, we need to take about a five-minute rest and break.
Okay.
Or two or three minutes, whatever.
Cool.
Business nor fund any board, any organization if a board member has been convicted of that fine and you've read the policy complies with the notification on the Florida statutes. Every agency shall provide quarterly financial statements and annual audits. This is something we said in their contracts. We're reinforcing it. That is our policy and we intend to adhere to it. All agencies shall provide insurance, liability insurance, officers and directors insurance, and any other insurance that we deem necessary for the protection of both that agency and the county. The reason we require directors and officers insurance and liability insurance is every community center has exposure. Those individual board members have exposure to liability. When they weren't carrying insurance, they were at risk. Our requiring them, when this board voted to require them to carry that, was for their best interest. And so that's, we're reiterating that policy that we want every agency that works with us to have the appropriate insurance to guarantee we all manage that risk and mitigate that risk. And finally, we're going to enforce all these rules as a supplement to all current contracts and all future contracts. So these will be written into the contracts as part of it. In addition, I have to admit to you, we have not been following the terms of the license agreement that we have with the Animatics Recreation Center. Section five calls for scheduling of events being that we and the community center will coordinate one master calendar. It's not being done. Additionally, the county is to invoice the recreation center for the electricity charges used by the recreation center. And then the recreation center is to pay all electricity for the buildings. Those are not being currently enforced. That is in the contract, so we intend to follow the contract. And again, these policies apply to all centers. They apply to all youth sports organizations and all community centers.
Board, discussion, questions for David?
I mean, Dave, what I'm seeing, it's just, it's a house cleaning time, you know, for ourselves, you know? Got to start off where we've created a lot of these problems.
We have not enforced our contracts as we should have.
And this goes along with all the contracts we have with all the other community centers, right?
We believe in a policy where we apply the policies equally to everybody.
Okay, that and that's what, okay.
Because I know years ago, as I spoke before, you know, when I was with baseball, we, we just enacted the, you know, the background check worked out good and truth is, I thought everybody did it at that time, but it, it was good.
And in the board's policy that you adopted, I guess a year and a half ago or so, you enabled the landscaping park director and recreation director to set policies for these parks. It was about the time we were doing it for Rum Island. It was in that particular ordinance. And so we do have the ability for those folks to set these policies.
David?
Yes, sir.
How are you going to determine what power electricity that, that the center used directed for them and the power used for the community like we do Winfield, Mason City that have lights and they go in at night and play basketball. Winfield somehow is always at Winfield at night practicing softball. They are always out there at night doing, doing softball. The same thing happens at Animatics. So how do we, we separate what's Animatics like bill and what's County like bill portion of it is?
This is an excellent point. Having to segregate the bill, you know, obviously the bill doesn't come segregated. So that is why it's critical also to have the master calendar to avoid conflicts, but also to know who's using the facility when. So the question is, obviously, when the community center is using the community center, that day we would prorate that 130th or 131st of the bill to the community center. The days that we've scheduled something or we've had one of our youth league schedule something, that date would be prorated to us. But as Commissioner Williams and I talked about today, the days that you have open play, you just have the lights on. At any other community center, we would pay that bill.
As long as it's fairly for everybody, it's the same for everybody. That's all I care about.
I mean, surely you can do a track of, I mean, the light bill out of Animatics, I'm sure doesn't fluctuate that bad. There's probably a pretty good norm.
See, you could do what now?
I said the, the light bill out of Animatics, I'm sure is pretty consistent, you know, from one year, I mean, from, you know, January to, you know, December.
We pulled nine months' worth of light bills? And I'll be honest with you, when the football field lights are on, it's a lot more power than when the football field lights are not on. So it does fluctuate.
You're right. No, yeah, I, I agree, I agree. But, you know, during that time, you're, you're exactly right. We see that baseball, see that fairgrounds for sure. And, but no, no, I, I, I agree. But what I'm trying to say is that it's pretty easy to run out of an average and it's, it's pretty easy to say, you know, this month, this month, this month of last year, there was football game, football game, football game, football game, you know, so.
And that's the key for the master calendar, so we know what's going on.
So if you take, if you take the, I'm sorry.
No, your fair.
If you take the, the football game usage, which obviously we would cover those, those days, what, how significant is the power bill? I mean, are you, are you, are you just making a lot of aggravation for something that really at the end of the year isn't a big expense?
You are. For months that the power bill is high, it's about $1,300. That's when the lights are on. Months when the lights aren't on, it's a couple hundred bucks, 300 bucks.
So I would, I would, I would assume that the months of power bill is high is because they're playing football and those, those, the majority of that bill would be ours because we sponsor that. So are we really just arguing over, you know, a couple thousand dollars a year when we come down to it?
Yeah.
And, and is, and is that worth the labor all year long of going through that bill every month and splitting it out? Would it not just be better to amend the contract and let's cover the light bill there since we're the, we're using 80% of it probably?
We have been covering the light bill, so we theoretically could make that decision without amending the contract. But if you amend the contract, you open it up for full negotiations for both parties.
I'm, I'm okay with that too.
Now, I would defer to the attorney.
Yep. So the way the language is actually written is AMRC shall pay the county as invoiced for electricity charges incurred during usage of the center. So I think Commissioner, excuse me, County Manager Kraus would agree that no invoices have been delivered by the county to AMRC. So the money's not owed without that step. So if the board as a matter of policy doesn't want to charge, you just make the decision not to charge. And then they don't have to pay an invoice they never received.
Yeah. Then of course, like, like, like David said, $200 a month, the only time that, you know, they get excessive light bill is during, you know, night usage of the football field, you know? And so, you know, that, that'd be a pretty simple one. I mean, you know, that if the Animatics Board does a Juneteenth, something like that, you know, where they're going to have a festival or something out there at night, it's going to be obvious, boom, that's going to be another $700 for that day. I'm just throwing numbers here. So, you know, so you invoice them for that, that's pretty simple. Pay, pay your average subtracting that football night. You see what I'm saying? And then we, we accomplish what Mr. Williams is saying, I agree with him.
We accomplished nothing on what you just said.
Explain to us about.
The kids in that community and the people that use that recreation center, although it might not be a county-sponsored recreation area, their parent pay taxes just like the people do at Winfield when they come out there and play softball at night and play basketball at night. We don't charge Winfield to pay for something that they're not sponsoring at the bar.
Correct, correct.
So my point is, if, 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 if the light bill is $200 a month, it's worth that to the community, the reason the county got Animatics because there wasn't anything being done at Animatics for with the inner city. And for $200 a month, those kids can come out and play at night.
I agree. That's exactly what I just said.
No, no, but you said if, 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 if they have a Juneteenth thing out there which is in the daytime, they're not going to be in their life use at night anyway.
No, I, well, I didn't know, Ron. I, I just said, I'd use Juneteenth as an example. So if they have an event that they're going to burn them expensive lights, you know, on the football, at the football field area where your bill goes from, like you said, $200 a month to $1,300, it's pretty obvious that it was a special event. You see what I'm saying? I mean, because other than, correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, but other than football, what does, does the lights on the football field get used?
No.
Okay, that's my point.
No, they do not.
My point is that, you know, and I agree with Ron 100%.
Run a football light to get called on, help call somebody in Texas somewhere, Clint have to do it to get your light turned on. So the light, it's not like at Winfield you go there and flip the field.
Right, 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 right.
They'll have to be turned on through a computer access.
Well, in regards to the, the way the electric bill's being handled today, it ain't broke, is what I'm saying. I'm saying right now, Joe, Joe has a good point. The county manager has discretion. If the Animatics Board ever enters into something, some kind of endeavor that increases the light bill substantially, he's got discretion to invoice them.
Exactly.
But they haven't been invoicing them now because it's probably only a couple of thousand dollars a month and it's not worth the staff's headache to go back and sort that out every month. So it ain't broke, y'all. This ain't broke. This part of the contract ain't broke.
That is exactly why it probably has not been invoiced is because it hasn't been worth the staff time to do it.
Exact staff time will outdo the money. I think we're all saying the same thing, we're just saying it a different manner. That's it. Yeah, because we all agree. We all agree.
Mr., Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Are you want to read that resignation letter to the board?
Oh, I, I didn't bring it for reading, sir, but I did receive it. Mr. Lewis did tender his resignation from the Animatics Board. I didn't bring it for reading. I didn't even want me to share it.
But you tell them the, what, what the resignation letter say in a sense of summary?
Only that I can, the only, I don't know if you want to share any details, only I confirm that he did in fact tender his resignation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Joe, my question is on the insurance, and we discussed this before with the Fort White Community Center. I'm reading on here that if it's not a county function, they have to provide insurance. Now, on the insurance portion down here? If it's, if it's ARMC to use the center and they're not sponsored by the county and therefore without county's insurance coverage, it shall unless waived by county provide county prior to activities at the center certification or other proof of the insurance coverages. And, you know, Fort White was doing that at one time charging, making everybody buy insurance. All right, it might still be doing it as far as I know. If they have an event down there, they have to insure that event. David, I, I, I don't know, are we doing that with the insurance with it? I mean, with Animatics?
Yeah.
When Juneteenth occurred? Well, I'm just, Mr. Warren did provide, Mr. Warren did provide proof of insurance for Juneteenth. So they did have their own insurance for Juneteenth.
Yeah, and that's my only question. I know, I know Fort White, that's the part, I mean, that's the community center I'm always dealing with seems like about insurance and stuff like that, so.
But even at other community centers, if you lease your facility to something that is a high risk, it would be advisable to require them to have event insurance?
Isn't that?
Your attorney would like to say something.
Go ahead. Isn't, aren't we using some discretion here now in the other community centers? I know that if, if, if you want to have your family reunion there on, on Sunday, that, that board of directors is not requiring insurance for that event. But if you want to have a major event, you know, with 300 people, they're requiring insurance. I think that, aren't the boards now using some discretion? And again, are we now fixing a problem where there's no problem? You know, I think, couldn't you leave it up to discretion in each individual case?
To answer your questions, the board provides us the basic policies at the beginning of their contract. And then individual events is up to them. You're right, it's their discretion. Most of the community centers, if not all the community centers, are operated by a community centered board, which is a 501(c)(3), and we don't operate those community centers. We provide maintenance, we provide repairs, but we do not operate the community centers.
Good. What you just said, David, they apply, they, they supply liability and directors insurance.
That's for their board members.
Right from the beginning.
Right from the beginning.
That's for their board member.
No, no, liability for the facility or liability, because you, you got it, it's misleading. Is it liability for the facility and directors insurance or is it, you understand what I'm trying to ask you?
If you look at your, the end of the, it's the same thing that we have in the franchise agreement. You can see it as, I think it's appendix A of the lease franchise agreement where it talks about the insurance.
Correct.
And it tells you exactly what the coverage is.
So the master calendar would tell you, like, if there was a huge event, somebody's going to be monitoring that master calendar now that we haven't been doing. And they're going to say, hey.
The contract requires us to coordinate it monthly with the community center.
There, there's no master events out there. That's what I'm saying.
He said they just, they insured the Juneteenth thing. I'm just wondering who decided to do that? Did we acquire that or did they just do that on their own? Because it sounds like there is.
We notified them that it would not be covered under our insurance and that it would be advisable for them to carry on.
That's what I'm saying. So we get the master calendar.
And they notified us that they were aware of that and they took care of it and Mr. Warren provided us with proof of insurance.
So the master calendar will keep that straight. We'll know if there's a.
And it also prevents people, us, from trying to schedule something while they have an event.
And while they're having something.
With them trying to have an event while we're trying to schedule something. It just keeps it cleaner, avoids conflict.
Back in old days, there was a calendar that was filled out with events, annual events that, that Animatics might had and then the football season and we knew that things couldn't be happening when, when football season was going on. So there used to be a calendar cap and we just got away from it over the years.
But correct me if I'm wrong, any event that the county was involved in at that park, the county would provide insurance. And if it's an event the county's not involved in, why do, is it really our business where they have insurance?
Yes.
If the county's not using the park that day, it's a private park that we lease, right?
Only because the contract requires us to ensure the park.
If, if. So, so the contract requires us to ensure the park. So you're saying that if there's an event we don't cover, there has to be some kind of insurance on the park. That's where this falls in.
Attorney. Commissioner, Commissioner Witt, so Animatics is private property operated by a 501(c)(3) where we have a license, right? So we have a right of use subordinate to the private entity. And we did a licensing agreement that said, look, we'll spend this money to upgrade the facilities and improve the facilities. But if we do that, we don't want there to be a circumstance where you have a third party come in there and use it and destroy it and there's a lack of coverage on it. Because our insurance is only going to cover our events. So when we asked them to require insurance of third parties, it was to protect our investment in the facility.
I got you. I understand. I'm good with that.
And then the other issue, when we compare Animatics to community centers, community centers have a license basically from us to use our property. So it flips the script, right? Anytime you look at Animatics, you got to remember we're in a different position than we are with every other community center. And so we had to write into the Animatics licensing agreement a lot of the things that are just policy for, for our community centers. Now, the policy that's being proposed tonight doesn't have to do with whether or not you're a private community center or public, or, or community center operating on public property. If you're a 501(c)(3) and the county issues you checks for any reason to fund your operations, you have to comply with this policy. That, and that's where you got three different things going on here. With Commissioner Murphy's insurance question, so you've got directors coverage because directors on 501(c)(3)'s can have individual liability. And then you have general liability coverage, which doesn't necessarily cover everything that can possibly happen. It's not a full-blown casualty policy, but at a million dollars, it's going to cover just about everything we're concerned about.
And, and I could see this coming into play, even in my district, even on my community centers where we had a, a board member concerned about personal liability in, in regards to an event. And if this had been in place then, you know, that might have eased his concerns and, and, you know, he, he might still be running that community center.
Commissioner Witt, I, I was having a conversation with a fellow attorney the other day. I wouldn't serve on an not-for-profit board if there wasn't at least a million dollars in directors and liability insurance. Because you have individual liability as a director of a nonprofit.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with it. Okay. Motion to.
I think we're looking for approval of the policy under the resolution.
adopted Resolution 2021 R39.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Ah.
Okay, let's move on.
Contract for Transportation Services, Swanee Valley Transit. In a nutshell, this is the annual renewal for our contract with Swanee Valley Transit. It's $58,706.
I move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
Building Zoning Code Compliance Officer Position. I'll make this as simple and painless as possible. Right now, you've got code enforcement and you've got planning technicians and they're all enforcing different aspects of the land development regulations. So we view this as a way to make it more efficient and more effective for the planning and zoning office to operate. They would take all the planning technicians and all the code enforcement officers, make them all code compliance officers. Therefore Troy can have them do enforcement on any issue he needs to, he can have them do different things and he gives him the ability as their director to assign them responsibilities. It really makes them more effective. So they can assist Brandon and they can also do code enforcement. Any one of the three.
So they bring all their pays up to equal?
We bring all the pays up to the planning technician pay, only in this case it would be called the code compliance officer. This was reviewed by the attorney and by human resources.
I move that we approve the new code compliance officer position.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
BA 2161, this is bookkeeping, but because of the dollar amount, it's necessary for me to bring it to your attention. I'm telling this for the public because I know the board already knows this. The MSBU taxing unit pays a tipage fee to the landfill for the amount of garbage assessment. Well, the volumes went up last year, whether it's due to COVID and people staying at home and throwing out more trash or the growth in the number of households, the tonnage went up at the landfill, therefore our cost in tipage fees went up. This $250,000 is to bring last year's budget whole, so that 100% of the tipping fees would then be paid to the landfill as we're required to do. So it's a bookkeeping error, or not an error, but a bookkeeping necessity.
Motion to approve BA 2161.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
Surplus assets. The purchasing department gives you surplus assets all the time to dispose of. She's asking you to give her permission to declare all these assets surplus and give them the, the ability to decide whether to sell it via auction or discard it. It includes mostly older computer equipment, printers, bad ballot tabulators from the supervisor of elections, includes the old mobile home at the landfill, includes the mobile homes that were at 302 North Gilbert Court, and includes one ice machine. And we're just asking you to declare them surplus and allow us to auction or dispose of them as the asset deems necessary.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
The next one's Resolution 2021 R42, setting the time for the November 4th meeting. We talked to you earlier about it. The fairgrounds is going on that day, the auctions that night, so we asked to move the board meeting to 9:00 a.m. that day. The resolution sets the time for that meeting.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, on the additions calendar. Resolution number 2021 R44, setting time of regular meeting for your next meeting, October 21st at 8:30 a.m. Because of various issues, we're asking you to move that board meeting to the morning at 8:30. It will adjourn by 11:00. At 11 o'clock, there will be a town hall from the PDC on the Flatfield.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
Next thing is the city building inspectors, and Joel can probably explain this better than I can. But as you know, the city's building inspector resigned, given it last day of October 15th. The city has approached us to provide building inspections for them so that they don't have to shut down. And I'll let Joel talk about the authority needed to be a building official.
Correct. So the, the city obviously had its own building official. He'll, he'll no longer be able to perform inspections as of his resignation date. The city would like to do an interlocal agreement, which would essentially name our building official as their building official, but that won't be done by the 15th. So there'll be some gap. And what I'm recommending is if the board is okay with Troy acting in that capacity for the city, if you would indicate your approval by motion. I did sit on a meeting with the city manager, the interim city manager and the county manager the other day. There's a lot of financial issues that have to get worked out in terms of permit fees and funding the position and making sure that issues aren't being looked past. So I don't know if it'll be at the next board meeting that we have in interlocal to look at, but it'll be pretty soon. We're just looking for the board's blessing on Troy serving in an interim capacity.
I'll make a motion, we allow Troy to serve interim for the city.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Troy, would you, do you have anything you want to say about this or?
We, we've done it before.
So you're okay with it?
We, we've done it. I mean, I don't know what, how long, I don't know what their intentions are, if there's going to be still in the future, but I mean, we've done it temporarily several times. We've just never had a formal agreement that I'm aware of.
Well, definitely this ought to open up the opportunity for the county and the city to sit down there and talk about merger services too, because this is, yeah.
Absolutely.
Doors wide open and this is appropriate time.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
The next one is a revision to the position for mechanic two. I will turn it over to Mr. Kirby. Mechanics, we are out of mechanics and so this is time sensitive.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus. Over the bottom line is I got one mechanic left at the shop. And we're really in danger of having a contract work out. I don't, I don't know what else to do about it. Easiest bite of the apple was to remove the CDL requirement. Mr. Kraus now obviously evaluating positions, as you guys well know, to readjust the pay. But if you'd have ever told me it was down to one mechanic at the shop, I'd have never dreamt that. But that's where we're at. So the first bite of the apple was to remove the CDL requirement. I got a shop foreman and one mechanic, I should say. I do have a CDL license with him. We just got to be work smart. The challenge with it is, they go out, they fix a truck, require a CDL requirement, I got to get a truck driver out there. But that's my first bite of the apple and the reason I considered it time sensitive was not being able to fill those roles. We did not budget the contract mechanic workout. We've never had to. But the shop is overfilling the gills. They got one man and a, one foreman and they're both turning wrenches. So that's where we're at.
I move that we revise the position of mechanic to Mr. Kirby.
Second.
Ron, second.
Got a motion and a second, any comment? All in favor, say aye?
And then finally, Budget Amendment 2202, transfer of funds for business and individual assistance and contract amendments. In a nutshell, you talked about funding this moving forward. We're now in the new fiscal year, so we need to add it to the new fiscal year budget if you're going to expend the monies. So we're asking you to approve the budget amendment to appropriate the funds. There are two options. One in your thing is to fund it from county reserves, money left over after the tariffs were bringing. The other option is it is eligible for ARPA funding and you could charge it to ARPA and hold on to those monies for other things that you may need it for.
But Chairman, I, 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 I think that money should come from ARPA and that, let's freeze up that other money that we talked about, some money for the jails. So we pay it out of ARPA and I move we take the recommendation and be funded to ARPA.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
The other aspect of this is, we talked about allowing United Way and possibly Catholic Charities to administer the program as they did the last time. We're asking you to allow us to grant a contract extension to these agencies with the following revisions. The extension is a one-year extension from October 1st, 2021 to September 31st, 2022, should say 2022, with an option to renew if funding is available. We want to increase the cash advance that we did last time from $50,000 to $100,000. Want to increase the assistance to the individual to $5,000 and we want to change the county contact from Ben Scott to David Kraus.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor?
All right.
And thank you very much for everything. I appreciate it. And, um, that's all I have.
Okay, at this time, we're going to open up public comment for two minutes. Anybody got anything? Okay.
I want to address the board, um, about Mr. Foreman's off-the-cup opinion on four board members. I think it's lacking any merit or legal substance. He did not provide any case law or rule, or a careful examination of this enabling legislation. It is clear and not complicated or confusing. It is obvious Mr. Foreman misread the legislation. The cure for this would be for the board to authorize, um, the attorney, Mr. Foreman, to immediately ask for an expedited or an accelerated attorney general opinion. There's too much at stake to do anything less. I thank you for your consideration. But if you guys would authorize, um, the attorney to ask for, uh, attorney general opinion on if its four members can act, does a, um, physician have to be on the board?
Thank you. I'll comment on that. I think, I think in listening to Mr. Williams, that they've addressed a legal question with the governor's office multiple times. And it's not, this board's, this board has nothing to do with whether that board is legal. That, that's an independent board. If, if, if such time they get a fourth member, and the governor's office opinion is that they're a legal board, and, and this thing dissolves, our, our receivership dissolves, that's what happens. I mean, you're trying to put stuff on this board that we just don't have the authority to administer.
But the enabling legislation states one member will be a physician.
I understand that.
So why does it not hurt to have Attorney Foreman ask for an attorney general opinion?
Because the makeup of the Lake Shore Hospital Board has nothing to do with this board or this board's receivership. If at such time, that board is deemed it's back together, and the judge, the judge, the judge says our receivership ends, our receivership ends. Your argument is with the judge and with the governor, not with the board of county commissioners.
But if there's not a board, they cannot ask for an opinion. But if this board is acting as a receiver.
Barbara, you've been, you've been, you've been asking this question for years. You've been debating this question for years. Well, Mr. Witt is saying he is 100% correct. Me sitting on the board previously, me and you arguing in the past and stuff like that, but you had a lot of the good valid points. But what Commissioner Witt just plainly said, we have no jurisdiction over that. It's not right for us to be asking Joel Foreman, he's not their attorney. If you need to be asking Mr. Kubaline, who is the Lake Shore Hospital authorities, for him to render one, we're not going to render one. You're wasting your breath. We're not going to seek one. You're wasting your breath. And you know more about the hospital authority than anybody in this room probably. But you're wasting your time. We're not going to do it. It's clear. It's, it's simple. So, you know, you argued with Jack, you argued with Dale, you argued with Joel, and we have, we ain't got a dog in this fight.
Uh, can.
And, and I think it's clear, it made clear to me anyway, that this is uncharted territory. This is something never been done before. And, uh, that's why we went through the, through the judge to have it done. And so I agree with Commissioner Witt, Commissioner Murphy. If you've got any legal questions, they should be brought for, for the attorney for the Lake Shore Hospital Authority.
Can Attorney Foreman?
Not the board of county commissioners.
Can Attorney Foreman address this concern of mine?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you want me to?
No, that's, that's. Thank you.
Um, one last question.
You've had your two minutes. Thank you.
Um, this is important.
Thank you.
Um, did Mr. Foreman?
Got anything to add to this?
Sylvester Warren, 930, this is Joe Coney. Chairman, I'm just curious, as I was sitting, I was thinking, what, what was the relevance, if you don't mind me asking Mr. Murphy, uh, out of all events to initiate the Juneteenth event?
The only reason I, if, if I may, or go.
I miss up to the chairman. I mean, I don't care if you say something.
Okay, well, go ahead. Do you want me to address that right now?
If he has anything else to say.
I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead. You're fine.
And two, um, I noticed that, um, Commissioner Hollinsworth and some other commissioners was eager to address the inequities of, uh, some essential workers, which is a great and noble thing. I, I hope that it don't start with essential workers. Uh, I hope that this board will be willing to right a whole lot of other wrongs and making sure that other disparities and inequities that take place, not only with essential workers, but with different communities, uh, different organizations, and things of that sort. Just don't sing out the essential workers, uh, to right those wrongs. There's a lot of other, uh, issues that take place within the different communities, um, that you all do not discuss, uh, when they're brought up. Um, y'all bat them down, kick them down, uh, try to find a way to make out somebody be radical, uh, to make out someone to be race-baiting, which, uh, evidence proved that there's a huge disparity in the inner city. And sometimes there's a lack, and there's an unwillingness, uh, to see it. Uh, I don't know whether or not it's considered to be, uh, the syndrome of not living there or not being from there. Um, but I think that we shouldn't stop there. Um, so I hope that this board, since they've taken this essential worker route, uh, they'll take it, uh, for other individuals, other ethnicities, and so forth. Thank you.
But just as, uh, just as an explanation, Sylvester, I alluded to Juneteenth, not as a specific event, and football, if you remember, just as a usage of lights, just trying to point out a point of that's where your escalated costs are in your light bill.
We only pop fireworks that night.
Excuse me?
We only pop fireworks that night.
I said that, I couldn't understand.
We only pop fireworks that night.
Okay, I understand. And I just assumed that, you know, with all the other events going on there, that, you know, you may use the lights leading up to the fireworks. I, I don't know. I, it's a, you know, I, I mean, I, if you read it as though that I said something negative about Juneteenth, absolutely not. But, you know, that, that, that was my only point.
I mean.
Thank you.
Yeah, you.
And of course, I wasn't the only one up here to say anything about Juneteenth. I wouldn't say nothing negative about it.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of people doggone Juneteenth because it, it don't affect them in a way that it affect me and other people. I mean, so there's a lot of people that harp on certain events they shouldn't harp on. How about being supportive, read up on it, come join us, uh, on the next Juneteenth event, be a part of it, and try to understand the culture of the people that, um, sometimes are not fairly represented. Be a part of it so you can better understand the culture and the history behind it. And I think that would make better sense, at least in my opinion. Thank you, your Chairman, for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. We understand that's an important day. Yes. Anybody else? Two-minute comment? Don't send anybody else. We'll close the two-minute comments section. Okay, staff, do you have any comments? Major?
I got a comment.
Okay.
Just so we don't have to, I don't have to reiterate this again. The fact is, non-essential workers got two weeks off. Didn't matter if they were sick, didn't matter if they ever been sick, didn't matter what they did. Essential workers didn't get those two weeks. For us to put any contingency upon that two weeks is not being fair, because there was no contingency upon the non-essential workers. We're just giving, we've made it about COVID. Forget COVID even exists. They got two weeks off. Essential workers didn't get it. They need it. They deserve it because they didn't get it. I don't know why we're even bringing all these COVID policies. It's just a fact. They got two weeks. This group of employees didn't. And it's just a fact. We need to give it to them. I'm done with it.
Thank you, Major.
I'm good.
Uh, I was asked, uh, the gentleman that rented the property from the county last year is not asking this question. Are we simply considering renting that property out again, putting up for rent? And of course, I didn't think about it until I was at the 500 acres we leased out last year, Ron?
I don't know. Joel handling that.
I, I think when y'all did the lease last year, you said that was it.
That was it.
January 31st of 2021, I think, was the last hunting day on that property.
That's, that's right. That's right.
And just to let the commissioners know, I mean, I think Clint even found some hunters out there within the last couple of weeks.
Okay.
And, and that's the issue, is they're going on that property a lot more. And, and, you know, I don't know if y'all seen it out there.
So he was saying that there was no lease on that property.
There, and, and there's no, yeah. Y'all, y'all said last year when you approved that lease that that was the last one.
I, I, I just think that agreement, remember that we said we'd do it this year, but that was the end of it.
Well, who's going to police the property?
Well, nobody's leasing the property.
I say police it.
Clint's out there quite a bit right now.
Clint's been starting some workouts there.
He went out there actually, I think, last couple of weeks and found a bunch of stands and cameras and everything, and made sure they got back to their owners. So he's, he's patrolling it now. He's got his guys checking up on them. Oh, I'm sorry.
That is the issue at hand. The guys are out there just kind of bush-haul mode, cleaning around the perimeters and whatnot. And they, they see the tree stands, and I think on our staff side of things, you know, it's hunting season, we're about to, they don't want to be up to a guy on a tree stand or so forth and so on. That is the issue at hand. But to answer your question, Mr. Williams, Clint and his staff are starting out there to clean up and maintain the property.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody good? Got a motion, Judge Jarnes?
I'm moving.
Judge Jarnes?